Good evening to everyone. Welcome to our meeting. We call the meeting to order. First, we're going to review and approve the agenda. If everybody could look at that. We have a slight change with Dr. Keating.
That's okay. We can do what we can.
Sure. Okay. Any changes on the agenda? Okay. Stays the way it is. Moving on here to approve the minutes from July 20th, 2015. And you have a...
A vote on the agenda.
Oh, even though nobody's going to say anything.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Oh, just the way it is. Okay. Terrific. Yes. Okay. Second, Scott, thank you. All in favor? Everybody's in favor of keeping the agenda. Hi, Jean. Are there any changes or anybody want to make a motion one way or the other about the minutes? Yes. Jim?
To approve the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. And is there a second? Jean, thank you. All those in favor of keeping the minutes as they stand, please signify or raise your hands. And abstain if you weren't here. That's right. Okay. Did you get that, Lisa? Everybody? Terrific. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to any subject. Is there anyone who wants to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Michael Nowacki, and as of 5:30 tonight, when the mail arrived, I am an official candidate certified by the Secretary of State for the Office of First Selectmen of the Town of New Canaan on November 3rd. As you know, based upon what was in the newspaper on Thursday, there was a public hearing held by the Audit Committee of this town. And it started running on July 31st. It ran live both on the Internet and on NCTV-79. And it has run three hours a day, three times a day, ever since. It probably is the most significant public meeting. There was a word that Ed Kanga used about two and a half hours into that meeting, and that's in the article that was in the advertiser, and the word was fraud. It's a serious word. As you may know, since February 12th of 2013, I have been reporting to this body, to the Board of Selectmen, to the Town Council, and the Board of Finance, unreported revenues that have been coming into the New Canaan Public School District that have not been reflected in your budgets. I will point you to best practices in the Town of Darien, page 15 of their budget, which was approved. There is $4 million of revenue, including summer school revenue of $660,000. That's on page 16 of their approved budget. We, as taxpayers and as a member of the New Canaan Taxpayers Association, LLC...
Your two minutes are up now.
I'll stop, but I'll be back next week. Thank you.
Are there any other...
I don't leave in a rush. I go home to watch the meeting because I can do more than one thing.
Are there any other people who would like to speak this evening? All right. There being no others. We have a very exciting agenda tonight. And heading up that, do you want to introduce the agenda?
I would love to. So, our first presentation tonight comes from our athletic director, Mr. Jay Egan. You probably noticed as you drove up to the meeting tonight that our fields were full of sweating, panting, I'm sure, students as they begin their... They're getting in shape for the season that's about to come. Jay and I spoke a bit and talked about doing a recap, sort of, a bit on some of the highlights of the year that concluded in anticipation of the year that's to come. And Jay's put together a presentation to share some of that information and certainly is here for dialogue and discussion as well.
Thank you, Brian. It's great to be here tonight to talk about some exciting things that happened last year and sort of transition into the 2015-16 athletic year. Some of you may know, I went to the University of Miami, and this is actually a cool day in Miami. I feel this time of the year when I used to transition from Connecticut to Miami for athletics, it was... I felt just about like I did when I walked into the room before the air conditioner was on. But it seems better now, so that's good news. I also, I have a lot of good news that I'd like to share with you upfront, then get into some details of our athletic program, and then certainly answer any questions that you might have. Probably the best news that I have to share tonight is Diane Murphy-Cavell was awarded the 2015 Secondary Athletic Trainer of the Year. This award took place, I believe it was in May. Diane has been the athletic trainer at New Canaan High School since 1982. Diane was the first full-time athletic trainer in the state of Connecticut. And the reason I think this is good news, I think it's good news that Diane has been recognized for all her work and all her good work. Furthermore, I think it's good news for all of the athletes at New Canaan High School because we could not have a better person who is entrusted with their health and safety. And this picture, she hates this picture, so I brought her in person because, you know, she didn't like the picture, but I wanted her to be here and for you to see Diana, to see Diana, to be aware of her. Of all the people that are behind the scenes in any athletic program, I think athletic trainers are probably the ones that receive the least credit and probably deserve the most credit. Harrison Pierce, who's our team physician, has told me on numerous occasions that he thinks Diane is the best person at diagnosing athletic injuries that he knows, including his colleagues who are doctors. He said rarely does her diagnosis on... Is her diagnosis on the field not correct? So Diane is very modest. She didn't like the picture, and I'll explain the picture, why I thought it was important to put the picture up even though she begged me not to. Standing next to Diane is Tim Godfrey. Tim Godfrey was a student trainer from Sacred Heart University. We are in a program where Diane seasonally gets at least one student trainer to do their practicum work. And so, this has been going on about five years, I think? Six years? And I'm told that we're the preferred choice for all of those interns. So, Tim also received an award, and behind him is an award of a report that he did on bilateral foot surgery, which had to do with calcaneal lengthening. And I'm going to tell you, we decided that, I wasn't going to say this, but they used kryptonite in this process. Now, that's really kryptonite. It's not like, not Superman stuff. It's really kryptonite that they use to rebuild this ankle. And Tim reported this out to the athletic trainers in the state of Connecticut, and he was recognized for doing that. So, on a number of fronts, I think that I'm happy to share this information about Diane being honored, and I'm happy to, you know, I'm proud to work with Diane. She makes my job a lot easier because I know that she is going to do, take care of the health and safety of our athletes, which is really our primary concern. New Canaan, over the summer, we applied for and were granted from the National Athletic Trainers Association, the Safe Sports School Award. And this is granted to schools who meet certain criteria. That criteria includes having an emergency action plan, having a method to inform parents beforehand of risks of athletics, and then keep them informed in the case of injuries and any other situations that may occur with athletes. Another criteria is that their facilities are safe and well-maintained, that there is an existing injury prevention plan that is available and that is enacted for all athletes, and that we monitor the quality and the fit of all of our protective equipment. So, the Board of Education provides us with the funding to have excellent safety equipment in all sports, particularly football. And Diane checks the... This is one of the things that she does is check, continue to monitor the fit of the helmets on all of our athletes. We have 134 kids probably playing football. Just to give you an idea of the scope of Diane's job, this fall, I think it'll be like every other fall, and we'll probably have 700 athletes participating in our athletic program. So Diane is the... She's the only person that we have to meet the needs of all of those athletes. I'll just give you a little more background for your information about injury prevention and management. Every athlete, obviously, will have a physical on file. We have an online registration program. There's a parent permission slip, and there are policy acknowledgements there, and those policies include information about cardiac, emergency cardiac care, the concussion management. There's a film that we ask the families to watch so that they can be as well-informed about the risks, the athletic risks with respect to those three areas as possible. We're mandated to do that. That's why we do it. We also think that it's an important thing to do. We keep very detailed accident reports, and that's to protect everybody involved. And so, you know, I'm happy to say to the Board of Education that that's one of Diane's strong points, of her many strong points. And we are coordinated with the SNAP program, which is the program that the school nurses use to gather and access medical information on students. Diane has an iPad that she takes with her as she's traveling around to all the games, and this allows her immediate access to SNAP. And she is, again, very diligent on accident reports, filling out accident reports accurately and in a timely fashion. So if anything in years to come, people would have questions about any athletic injury or how that was handled, we would have extremely accurate information that we could access, which I think is very important. We have very specific return-to-play protocols with respect to concussion management. There's, I think, I've spoken to this group before about the Connecticut's Public Act, and when I speak to the parents in preseason. Connecticut has passed the laws, one of the, I think, 10 or 12 states that have these laws on the books, that an athlete who sustains a concussion regardless of how minor must be excluded from participation in athletics until he or she is evaluated by a physician. Well, this is a public law that I believe is in its fifth year. And, you know, Diane and I have been together since 1985. Diane's been doing this from the first day that I walked into New Canaan High School. So she's way ahead of the curve. So we were using this criteria as far as evaluating injured athletes before it became a state mandate. And there's a return-to-play guidelines. This is also information that's posted, you know, on our website. This goes back to the indicator of presenting the information proactively to parents. Our coaches are really well-aware of the risks of a concussed athlete and the caution that must be taken with that concussed athlete. Frankly, our parent population, I don't think is as aware of these risks. And the main battles that Diane and I have is, obviously, the athlete wants to come back and participate early, but many times, the parent also wants the athlete to come back and participate early. So I will tell you that Diane is extremely strong as far as that's concerned, and we do not bend on that. We don't bend on our protocols. And so, this provocation test that's explained here is supervised by Diane. Diane, after the athlete is cleared by a physician, will enact this provocation test. If the athlete passes the test, then the athlete is able to return to practice, not necessarily return to play. And that return to play is determined by the amount of time that the athlete is inactive. If the athlete is inactive for a week, the return to play may be two or three days. If the athlete is inactive for two weeks, the return to play might be five days. You know, Diane is very big on, and I am in agreement, that there's a deconditioning period that happens with an injured athlete, and to put an athlete who's been injured for a period of time back into a game, just because it might be an important game, is not something that we do. We were asked to do it, but we have not done it. And I can say that it's been a great help to me to resist that, having Diane have such, you know, a specific methodology for this return to play. This is more about the test. And that's pretty much what we have on the athletic injury. I thought you'd be interested in that. There's a lot in the news about concussions. It's something that I believe it may be a little overdramatized. My opinion on the state of head injuries and safety of athletes is that athletics has never been safer, and there's never been a higher awareness on the part of the coaches and the community in general of the risks and of the need for athletes not to return to play early and for a need for that to be taken seriously. You know, this idea of, you know, you hit your head and you don't know where you are, and they wait 20 minutes. We were talking about this today, and you go back into the game. That just doesn't happen anymore. There's nobody in athletics that would think that that would ever happen. So I really think between the equipment that's available now and the way that the coaches and trainers and everyone around the athletes is educated, I think it has never been safer than it is right now. So, good news from the 2014-15 athletic season. New Canaan High School was the only high school in Connecticut to win four state championships during the 2015 spring. No school won more. Weston and Bloomfield also, they won three. Girls' field hockey won the FCAC championship for the first time in 10 years, beating Darien. And it was the first time we'd beaten Darien in 10 years, and it happened to be at the game. And it was a really, it was a very, it was a remarkable team with respect to the effort that they put in in the FCAC semifinal and the final. The two teams that they beat were Wilton and Darien, who probably were more talented than they were, but they had a real strong work ethic and a very great team dynamic. And I think that's one of the things that allowed that to happen. Our football team has had a history of success. This past season, they won the Class Double M championship, and they defeated Darien and avenged their loss in the Turkey Bowl, which was, you know, our league championship. So that's always important. Swimming and diving, Kylie Tobin, who I think left for the University of Virginia yesterday, won the state open diving championship, and she set a new state record for total number of points. It's the points that you accumulate, obviously, in diving based on the quality of your dive, and she has the highest point total ever in the history of the state of Connecticut. Boys tennis, they were CIAC Class L champions. A good piece of, a happy piece of news about our tennis program, Ben Young is our tennis coach. Ben was a captain at New Canaan of our tennis team. Ben was a captain at Bucknell. Ben is a teacher at the middle school. The way tennis is organized, they have a team championship at the state level, and then they go into an individual championship so the boys can play off in a ladder, just like happens in most adult tennis situations. And so, it's more loosely organized, but it's still a team component to it. So this year, there was some other schools from Fairfield County were creating some negative situations as far as their cheering, and so it became such an issue that the tournament director actually stopped the tournament and had a coaches' meeting and singled out Ben Young and the New Canaan players for exemplary behavior with respect to how they supported each other during the meet. So I think that's really worth mentioning to you. I mean, this is a quality young man. He's a quality teacher, quality coach. It's really good news. I'm really proud of him and, you know, glad that... Dan Borgman was our tennis coach for 150 years before Ben became the coach. And Dan wanted to be the person who handed off the program to Ben, and he was able to do so, and we kind of worked that through. And it was, it's a nice story, and he's a great asset to our school district. Girls' swimming, our 400 freestyle relay set a new state record at the open meet. They beat Darien again, which is always good news. Darien had broken the state record in the state class meet, which was the meet before, so they beat us in the meet before, and then we beat them at the state open, which is where all the schools compete against each other. And, you know, it's nice to do that, and it's nice to beat them. Zach Allen, who is a freshman at Boston College, was named the 2014 Connecticut Gatorade Player of the Year. Zach was an honor student at New Canaan High School, and he's in a business honors program at Boston College, and the dean of the business school is his advisor. And they think he's probably going to start for them this year. Boys' golf won the FCAC championship and the Division II CIAC championship. Bill Brown is another person that's been around New Canaan for a long time. He's a well-loved, revered guy. Went to New Canaan High School and has been here, and, you know, everybody loves Bill. Boys' lacrosse, they were CIAC Class M champions. We also have a New Canaan graduate coaching our boys' lacrosse teams, Chip Buzzio. Chip played hockey and lacrosse here. Chip is a Princeton graduate, and he's doing a tremendous job with that program. Girls' lacrosse, I think they won their fourth consecutive Class M championship. Kristen Wood is the coach. She's a physical education teacher and really tremendous person. New Canaan High School was awarded the FCAC Cup for the fourth time in five years. That's symbolic of the finest athletic program in the league. The criteria that's used to determine this award, it's not just wins and losses. It's the percent of athletes who participate. It's the percent of coaches, administrators who volunteer as league officials, sports committee chairpersons. It has to do with sportsmanship and, obviously, competitive results. I don't know whether this is good news for us or bad news for us, but next year is my... I'm on the executive board of the FCAC, and it'll be my turn to be, I'll be the president of the FCAC for two years following this year, and we have a new executive director. So the FCAC is going to be involved in some exciting things. I'm going to share some of those things with you tonight later on in the presentation. This, I had our, we had a meeting with our coaches today, a preseason meeting, and, you know, this is some information that is important for everyone in New Canaan to understand, and I think it's surprising to a lot of us, it's surprising to a lot of you. Borderline shocking, I think, if you don't realize the size, the enrollment of New Canaan based on the enrollment of all the other schools that we compete against. So, Basset and Harding have withdrawn from the FCAC, so they are out of our league, and they joined the technical league in the state for competitive reasons. And so, New Canaan High School has the smallest enrollment of any public school in our league. And the only two schools that with, you know, obviously, Saint Joe's and Trinity are Catholic schools, and they are the only two with a smaller enrollment. Darien has 100 more students than we do, and, you know, so you can see that for yourselves there. But I think this is a, some information that you might not imagine was the case. Participation, the rate of our participation is the key to our teams being able to be competitive. We had 1,265 students last year. 891 of those competed in athletics, at least on one sport. That's 70% participation rate. 1,361 total athletes participated. That's indicative, indication of multiple kids playing multiple sports. One of the big conversations that we continually have in the athletic department is how do we allow the concept of the multi-sport athlete to survive? How do we make ways for that to make it easier for those kids to play multiple sports, not specialized? There is tremendous pressure from the outside, commercial pressure, especially in communities like New Canaan, to have kids play one sport all year round and to generate revenue from outside, for outside coaches or outside organizations, you know, with the promise of getting you into a college or having you be successful and get a scholarship or whatever they're selling. So we are thinking of, always thinking of multiple, many ways to support the kid who wants to play multiple sports. And we encourage that in every opportunity that, with every, in every opportunity that we can. Just the scope of the program. Last year, we had 824 events. We have 104 coaches. We have 30 sports, and we have 57 teams. Levels. Levels. I've spoken a little bit about some of our coaching staff. I think we have, you know, I'm prejudiced, but I think we have the best coaching staff that you could find. We continue to, people want to come to New Canaan because they want to work with our athletes. They have, they are, working with our athletes is a very rewarding experience because they appreciate quality instruction, because they're used to quality instruction from the day they come to kindergarten, and they recognize it in coaches. And the coaches feel that, and the coaches get feedback, that type of feedback that the coaches get that make them want to be here. So we do everything we can to retain our coaches, which I think is one of my biggest jobs. The model of coach-to-coach teacher is really, is really starting to go by the wayside in all schools, and it certainly is in our school. We have 104 coaches, and 41 of those are faculty or staff members. And it's not for lack of paying attention to that because we hired a science teacher here at the high school who was formerly at another school in Fairfield County. He was a great teacher. He did a great job in the interview. We hired him, and he's also going to coach cross-country, girls' cross-country, girls' indoor and girls' outdoor track. So that's a great, that's a nice asset for us to have, and that really was not motivated by his ability to coach. That was motivated by his, the quality teacher that he is. So, in many situations, as we can have, where we can find a quality teacher who's also willing to coach, I think it's really important for us to always keep that in mind. The best, the best person to have as a coach is, in my opinion, is a trained educator. Not that that's, that doesn't mean that people that aren't trained educators can't be good coaches, but people that are trained as teachers, are trained in methodology, and teaching any content area is really the same. And so athletics is just good, good coaching is just good teaching. All of our coaches hold Connecticut Coaching Certification. It's mandated that they do so. There are two types of certification. One's a temporary certification, and one's a standard certification. So the person that would have a temporary certification is somebody who does not, is not a certified teacher. And they will, for one year, be able to teach with just a high school or college diploma and meeting other criteria, which I'll talk about in a minute. A standard certification is something that's, is a certification type that's issued to a person with teaching certification, and also to anyone else who, after one year, takes a 36-hour credit course with, provides and tries to fill in information about school culture and developmental appropriateness and a lot of the things that come to teachers in their educational methodology classes. And so, obviously, it's not going to be as complete as information as a teacher might have, but it's an effort on the part of the state of Connecticut to realize that that void might exist with people who don't have that background. So in that sense, it's a positive. I think it's a very positive thing. Coaching requirements, all our coaches are CPR, first aid certified. They have a three-hour concussion management course and continual refresher courses. They go through a background check, which is, it's initiated in Gary's office at Human Resources. They will all attend a preseason coaches' meeting. They will all be evaluated yearly by me. I gave you one handout today that I'd just like you to, just an example of this preseason coaches' meeting. The handout that we gave the coaches to take away at the meeting today is what, how they can shape team culture. And these are specific things. I talked to them about these as reminders of what good practice, good coaching practice would be. And this is really what we're all about. We want to emphasize effort and cooperation within a team. We don't want athletes to be afraid of making a mistake because they're going to get yelled at, or they're worried about making a mistake. People make mistakes all the time. It's an important part of the learning process. Note to the coaches that what you say, how powerful what you say is going to be, and that you have to be very careful, and you choose your word, to choose your words very carefully. And your actions speak so loudly, I can't hear what you say. It's truer for teaching virtues and other character qualities than it is for other types of behavior. Be a role model. So this is just a little reminder of what some positive practices might be on the part of coaches in shaping a positive climate on a team. And I've used this chart a number of times before, just to make sure that everyone had this information. I wanted to include it tonight. So there's three funding sources for athletics at New Canaan High School. So, there's three funding sources for athletics at New Canaan High School. One is the Board of Education, who funds the program, I think, very well. That advocacy has business office oversight and is subject to town audit. The, the All Sport Booster Club is a 501(c)(3) that is not sports-specific. It supports all athletics at, at New Canaan High School, and they are, as, as is important, as is necessary, in a 501(c)(3), they are independently audited, audited. Mary Cody is the auditor for the, for the Booster Club. The other support, which I think is an enrichment, I would classify it as an enrichment, are what we call team dues, and this is what captains' parents or senior parents on a team get together and decide that there's going to be a banquet, there's going to be memory books, there's going to be, the kids, the kids want to buy the same kind of T-shirt, and they will put together a budget, which I will review. We have athletic office guidelines for, for these parent support groups, and any monies that these parent support groups collect are, are deposited in a student activity account for that particular sport. So, there's no outside, there's nothing that's outside of the realm of the Board of Education with respect to funding. In the All Sport Booster Club, I, I have to continue to, to talk about this, this group. These are volunteers who are not interested in simply enhancing and enriching the sport that their son or daughter participates in. They want to do it for all the sports at New Canaan High School. There's very few athletic programs that I know of that have an all-sport booster club and don't allow individual booster clubs to exist, or discourage having independent booster clubs exist. This, I think, has been a secret to the success of the athletic department. It was started by my predecessor, Vinny Avino, in 1982. And as I, I actually saw him this summer, and he reminded me that, you know, he was almost torn limb from limb when he came to town and told, you know, all the individual booster clubs that they had to all work together for everybody's good. But it, it's really worked out that way, and I think this is a group. I have a lot of respect for the people that spend their volunteer hours for everybody, for everyone's benefit. So, this is the 2014-15 Board of Education Athletic Budget. We have, I have our DIRG information, so I thought I would just share with you, you know, our neighbors, the information, it's just for comparison, so we know how we're doing. So, that's, these are Darian's Board of Education-funded budget, and that's Wilton's Board of Education-funded budget. This is total funding, and so, the, in New Canaan, the $143,869 is representative of the money that the All Sport Booster Club donated to the Board of Education to fund additional coaching salaries. And the $92,000 for Darian is reflective of their club teams dues, that the club, the teams that, the dues that their club, club teams pay. the squash team pays $825 per year, their ski team pays $800 per year, and their girls' ice hockey pays $825 a year. And so, that, according to the information that they reported, that's what they're paid for, that's what their supplementary income is. Wilton has a pay-for-play component, and that's their supplementary income with a pay-for-play component. And those are the total budgets. I think we're doing, I think we're doing a lot with a budget that's significantly less than the teams that we compete with and look at as, you know, certainly teams that, that we should be able to compete with on a, on a regular basis in, in all, in all of our So, we have some guiding principles for, for athletics, and this is something that we share with the coaches. We talked about it today in our meeting. This is an academic environment, and so, we're always going to encourage the students to make a commitment to academics, and we're going to encourage them to make a commitment to athletics. And I think that's the best of, of both worlds, and generally, the, the students that are going to be committed academically, they're going to be the students that are going to be committed athletic, athletically anyway. So, what we talked about today in our meeting was, these are the students that we have to make sure that we're aware of what we're asking them to do, because they'll do everything. They'll stay up for days to be able to meet the, the responsibilities of, of whatever a coach or a teacher's asking them. So, that was part of our discussion today. We're all proud of New Canaan High School. We're proud of the community. We're proud of our traditions. We're proud of, you know, everything about the school, particularly, you know, including the athletic program. And we want to convey that to the athletes, and we want them to understand that, that how important that really is. And we have high expectations for everything that, that our athletes do, and, as well as how they conduct themselves inside the school and, and out of the school. It's good to have, it's good to have something specific, things, specific things that coaches can talk to about athletes, athletes, and that we can, I can talk to my coach, with our coaches about. And so, these are the core values that we've identified as, as being central to our athletic program. You know, a couple that you might be interested in, humility is, I think, really important, and we all think it's really important, so that's something we're, we're having conversations with athletes about. And we also think that community engagement is, is important. And we have, each of our teams is required seasonally to choose at least one community service activity. Last year, we chose, in the fall, we chose breast cancer support. This year, we're going to allow the teams to choose whatever, whatever community service is, is of their particular interest. But they will all do at least one community service activity. Fundamental tasks, again, talking points with students, respect the student code of conduct, you know, honor our traditions and values, and something that we think is important, create a positive legacy. It's important how you conduct yourself. It's important how people think of you as, as you're going through our school and, and as you leave the school. And that's, should be something, you know, we're trying to bring that, put that on the front burner as far as the, the athlete's thought process is concerned. These are some ways that we continue, that we, we can engage with the community. New Canaan High School has a Hall of Fame. Every two years, we induct, say, between six and eight members. This is not a year that we have a Hall of Fame dinner, but we did last year and we will next year, and we go back, and many of those people are still in the community, and it becomes really a community event, sort of like a reunion, but of just, you know, people that were engaged with, with each other in, in certain, certain years. We have tremendous involvement. Our coaches have tremendous involvement in youth sports. Most of our coaches, actually, one of the interview questions that I use with our head coaches is the idea of them being program leaders in the community for the particular sport. And if they don't have the, if they don't have that idea and they're not going to embrace that concept, they're probably not going to be as effective here as we would like them to be. So, all of our coaches have this concept of program leaders, not only nine through 12, but right down to kindergarten or whenever, whenever it may start. I mentioned the seasonal service activity, and we have this homecoming tradition where the, New Canaan old-timers host a pancake breakfast. All of our teams go to that. It's kind of a nice, again, it's one of the, the traditions that I think are unique to our school. We have a student athlete code of conduct. This is part of the process, the online process, where parents and the athletes are to look through the athletic code of conduct, and they sign off agreeing that they've read it and understand it. There's not really anything here that would be surprising. We've kind of talked about it before. We have policies around tobacco, alcohol, and other drug use. It's a huge challenge for public high, any high school. We, we make it clear that it's not acceptable behavior. We try to work with our parents. We try to talk about it all the time. One of our former principals once told me, I was the coordinator for health and, and physical education at the time, he told me, he said, "The one thing that you don't ever want to be is you don't want to be the guy that's responsible for stopping underage drinking in New Canaan." And what, what he meant was that it's, it's, it's a reasonable expectation that we continue to have high standards for student athletes around tobacco, alcohol, and other drug use. It's, it's not reasonable to think that we're going to stop that behavior, but somebody has to provide, you know, this is a counter-advertising thing. Somebody has to provide the point of view that says, "This is not something that you should be doing. It's not good for your health, and it's, you're violating team rules." And so, you know, our coaches will do that individually with athletes. I will do that individually with athletes, and we just keep working on it. And I think what this principal was saying to me is, "Don't think that you're ever going to solve this problem. Understand that it's something that you're always going to be working on." And that's the way I view it. I said this before, we're interested in how the students conduct themselves in school. It's not uncommon for a teacher to come down to my office and give me, tell me some issues that they might be having with students in class that are also athletes, and then we can have a nice conversation with them and see if we can make, maybe make them change that behavior. We're happy to do that. It's good for everybody, and it's a good, I'm, I'm happy that we have that relationship with our staff. We want everything they do to reflect positively on our school and our community, and that's, that's our position on this. So, sometimes things happen, and there'll be athletic code violations. Anything that's reported to me, I will investigate. If they're a factual report from a, from a reliable source that constitutes policy violation, we will, we will, there'll be some disciplinary action. You know, if we take disciplinary action, a few years ago, we had to take disciplinary action with some football players. Now, we're not going to tell them. One, one new thing for our coaches and for me is the amount of press coverage that high school athletics gets. That's another thing I'm going to talk about a little later. But one of the downsides of that is, you know, we have to be careful if we have to do some, have to have some discipline in-house, that it's something that nobody needs to know about and nobody will know about. So, you know, sometimes I think out in the community, people think that we never take any actions when these things happen. We may have taken those actions, you may not know about it, because it's not something that we're ever going to talk about. It's not, the young person doesn't, that's not the right thing for, that's not the right way to handle it. That's not the way we handle it. And something, I had an unreliable anonymous report of something today that came to my first, my first day back, and it was, I almost made it through lunch. And so, that is not a situation that we have acted on as far as our policy is concerned. However, an unsubstantiated hearsay about a policy violation may necessitate me having a conversation with the young person involved, and also may necessitate, it may, I may call the parent, and I may let the parent know that this was reported to me, there's no factual information behind it, I wanted you to know that, that this happened. So, I've been doing that for a number of years, and I have, in most, most often, had positive responses from parents with that. So, none of this is going to go ignored. Anything that's factual will be acted upon with respect to the athletic code. Everything is going to, in some way, be dealt with. And it's not my favorite part of the job, my least favorite part of the job. One of my favorite parts of the job in the last five years or so has been working with our captains, our, our captains' group. So, we have a captains' leadership council. We have standardized our process for selecting captains, which I think is something that doesn't happen at every high school. I got, we, we put together, the Wilton Athletic Director and the Greenwich Athletic, Athletic Director and myself, we put together all of our processes, and we came up with something that the three of us are using as a standard process in, in our schools. And so, we want people to start thinking about our student leaders, and with, as far as their, their qualities of leadership, character, attitude, what kind of role model they are, and what kind of student are they. And we, we ask them to rate themselves in, in this application process, and then we get, we select a, a group of however many students have nominated themselves, and then their, all their teams also rate them on all these indicators from five through one. And that's one of the ways that we gather information about student athletes who may be qualified leaders. So, it's not an arbitrary process. We have some specificity to it. That's not the only criteria used in our decision, but that's, that's a big part of the criteria. I had something interesting here, if I can find it. So, there's, there's, Sandy Workington and I have been conducting captains' leadership workshops, and we will meet with the captains six times during each season. And the, these are the six topics that we discuss. These are our six, the topics of, of our meetings. What has happened in these meetings, though, is the captains have begun to have dialogue with each other about common problems and leadership challenges, and it has been very interesting to see how common the, their challenges are and how they can help each other with strategies to go back to their team and solve these problems or work towards solving these problems. And in the last, I would say, three years, we've had a number of situations where we've approached the captains' leadership group to help us out. I think three years ago, Brian was still the principal. We had this Yik Yak, that app that came along where, you know, you could just trash people online, and you didn't, and it was just, you know, it's the most cowardly thing in the world. And I know that it basically shut down Staples High School because of all the nasty things that were said on, online. So, we found out about it early, and we got all of our captains together in, in the auditorium, I remember, and we talked to them about this. And we, we talked about how cowardly it was and how we wanted them to go out with their, with their peers and just say, you know, "This is not something we're going to do. We're not going to stoop to this in our school." And it never really took a foothold here. And, you know, I, I hope that, that this group's had some positive, I think that group, this group has some positive effect on it. You know, so that, that's something that really sticks out in my mind of, of the way we would access this group. So, it's the fall, and it's time for homecoming again, and the homecoming will be the 26th of September. And I'm going to call him Principal Egan, because it's Mr. Egan, it's Principal Egan. Principal Egan and I have had some discussion about reaching out to the, to the students. I know Priscilla Schultz has already started this with the Student Coalition, and looking for ways to restart some of our valued traditions around homecoming, and that would be the pep rally, and that would be the homecoming dance. So, I know Priscilla has already made some, she had had some positive, really positive conversations, and when I'm going to be meeting, Sandy and I are going to be meeting with the captains on the 21st this week, and this is one of the things that we're going to ask them to work on as well. So, we're hopeful that they're going to come up with some new ideas that will make that pep rally something that we can all have fun with and keep all the good that was about it, and, and move, move forward from some of the things that were concerns, concerns of ours. So, some exciting things that I'd like to talk about with, in, in the future, in the near future. When we installed the, the video screen in, in Dunning Stadium, I think it was four years ago, we were hoping that it would have a positive consequence with respect to the NCTV group, but we would never imagine that it would have had the type of effect on the TV broadcasting group that it has had. It has pulled all of those students and students from the general, drawn students to NCTV because it's, they're part of the events that go on in the stadium. And there's two or three kids that have gone to broadcasting school, public kids have gone out to Missouri, you know, which has a really, I guess, a good school. And, you know, it's been great for me. I work directly with them because they haul all of that equipment out of the school for every event. They set it up. When it's over, they haul it back. So, on the night of a football game, those kids are still here at 10:30 bringing all that equipment back into the school. And I think what motivates them is that they're producing, the, the product that they're producing, the, the TV broadcast of the football game, or lacrosse game, or the soccer game, or whatever it is that they're producing. the TV broadcast of the football game or lacrosse game or the soccer game or whatever it is that they're producing out there. And so, I think we have, we're going to be taking another step forward as far as our partnership, athletics partnership with NCTV. The league, the FSEC is going into a partnership with Hersham Acorn to livestream 40 events per season, so 120 events for the entire year. They've entered into a contract with Hersham Acorn so that they're the exclusive broadcasters of all the FSEC championships. This is, you know, this is the next thing as far as athletics is concerned. This is going to be the next step forward. The live streaming of games and people being able to watch the high school games without being directly in town. And the second part of this is being that, will be that on Hersham Acorn's platform, NCTV will be able to submit their broadcasts, and their broadcasts will be able to be shown on the Hersham Acorn platform. And what we're working on is we're working on some type of revenue sharing with respect to schools who create content for Hersham Acorn and, you know, because there's, it's a little bit unknown. The business of this is quite, it's quite unknown. And so, we have to, we're going to experiment with that in the fall, and they're able to look at, Marty Hersham is able to look at the metrics of the people who are, who are watching the programming and be able to translate that into an advertising value. So, that's what we're, that's what we're working on. So, I see this as an opportunity, not so much for revenue for athletics, but revenue for the TV broadcasting program as far as equipment is concerned. And, you know, maybe as far as those kids that are working, maybe there's some compensation, minimal compensation that the kids that are doing the broadcasting can do. That's yet to be determined. But I think it's very exciting, and, you know, I'm really looking forward to it. I think you all realize that graduation was streamed last year at Hersham Acorn with the people that streamed it, but it was our students who created the content. I'm going to get to the Ram Spirit Fund in a second, and the, our track, which is a, it's on town property, as you know. The Board of Education is this square here that we're on. As soon as you cross, I think it's right off, as soon as you cross the sidewalk, that's the town property all the way down to the tennis courts. And so, the track is actually on town property. I know that the track resurfacing, I'm just wanting to, as information, it's in the town's capital plan. I'm not sure where it's positioned. Maybe positioned next year, maybe positioned the following year, but I know that it's been put into that, into the town's capital plan, so there'll be some resurfacing there. There's also going to be some opportunity when that happens for some private funding to enhance that track, maybe with some, maybe with some stands and some storage areas that, you know, there's people that have already come forward and approached us about wanting to upgrade that facility. I talked about the streaming already, so. So, this Ram Spirit Fund, this is a group of volunteers in town that are interested in upgrading the athletic facilities. I hate to keep going back to this, but, so I think that the idea, where these folks got their idea is from Darian, who has a, they call it the Sunshine Fund. And that's, the idea is that they have, that they have artificial turf. It's going to be, the sun will always be shining, they'll always be able to play. They've raised $5 million, Darian, for turf enhancement. They put a new turf field in, out in that oval in front of the school. They put a new turf field in there this summer, which is supposed to be ready in September. And I think they have another one teed up, and they have, I don't know if they have some zoning issues or whatever, but I know they have another field teed up. So, what we would like to do is look at two projects in New Canaan. A new turf field, which I can show you in a minute, the location, and some renovations in Dunning Stadium. So, the proposed new turf fields are, you know, probably most of you already know this, but it's between the water tower field and the parking lot. These are fields that, they look pretty good from afar, but there's always been a drainage issue there, and the town has tried a lot of things. There's, if it gets really hot, you can see brown lines that go on a diagonal. That's where the pipes are underneath the grass, and there's a lot of, the town has done a lot of work to try to make those fields better. They don't drain very well. The topography of this, it's hard to realize it, but the topography is, everything drains down towards these fields, and that's why this turf field was built over by the senior center first. That was the worst part of the field. That was the most muddy part of the field, and basically, you know, half of it was usable for the most part of the fall and early spring. So, the proposal is to put a field and a half here that would be mostly for practice. It would be, obviously, all sports would use it and all ages. And the way the facilities that are not on the public school property are, is concerned, the town property, is the high school athletics has the rights to these fields until 5:30. After that, the town uses the facilities unless there's some extenuating circumstance. So, that's been the agreement. That's the way it gets scheduled, and that's the way these new proposed fields would be scheduled as well. And the renovations to Dunning, the Dunning field is 10 years old. So, the life expectancy of a synthetic turf field is 10 years. And so, what we've learned is when these fields start to fail, they don't, the way you can notice them failing is the fibers start to release because they become degraded by the ultraviolet rays in the sun, and so the glue and everything, they start to degrade. So, if you look at the white lines on the field, and the white lines are starting to look faded, what you're really seeing is the fact that many of those fibers are releasing. And so, that's one of the indicators that fields need to be replaced. They don't like, I don't think you could wear these out if you ran on them for 100 years. You know, it's, they're just, they're plastic. So, it's, they don't wear out in that sense, like a dirt, a grass field would wear out. They just become, the fibers become less and less. This field feels brittle to me now compared to the way, what I'm, I can notice the difference. Maybe it's because somebody told me it's wearing out, I don't know, but it seems, it seems like it feels different to me. So, I think that's, that's on the horizon for us. There are some other things in this plan that probably will never happen. One of the things that I think will happen is there'll be some renovation to the press box, and, you know, there may be another story put on, there may be a different type of press box. And one of the major things we would like to accomplish by doing that is to find an electronic cluster for the NCTV equipment, so they could, we could have it secured, and it could be there, and they could use it, you know, whenever, whenever there was a, an event. So, that's, that's what I have for tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
It's quite a presentation, Jay. Really appreciate that and all the different levels that you're providing us, the athletics as well as the values. I think many people will be very appreciative of that. And the idea that you're having the coaches reach down to the younger ages is very impressive and has a rolling value to it. I just wanted to take a minute, if I could, and personally thank Diane for the work that she's done along the way with the battered Hobbs kids who seem to always be injured at some point in some game. So, I just wanted to say thank you to her. And appreciate very much the safety that you've put in place, both of you. Questions, sorry, I just wanted to put my thing into questions or things. Scott? Comments?
Jay, thanks for coming and presenting. I'm really happy to see that we have a policy in place that's so defined about behavior of the kids, and I think that it's really borne out in all of the recognitions that we have. And I'm just so happy about that and how much emphasis and how delineated it is that we talk about the behavior of the kids on and off the field, and I think that's great. I think you did a great job there. I had a couple of questions for you. One is, if you could just update us on where we are on the policy of which sports are funded and which sports are not, specifically, not what the policy is, but where we are in the process of having it, I guess, is clearly delineated as the other things.
Gathering information about it. I don't, I was not prepared to talk about it tonight, but I'm planning, I'm prepared to talk about it at any point in the future. I'm planning to gather information about, from schools and the other GURG. I have about, I'm about halfway through that. And I thought what I would do is come back with that information to the board and then see where we would go from there. That was my understanding of where we were based on last winter's discussion. So, that's where I am with the gathering information. I'm waiting. I'll come back with, not with a recommendation, with just information, and then the board can direct me from there. I thought that was.
Look, I just think it's important that we get a policy in place. You know, whether everybody agrees with the policy or, I mean, everybody won't agree with the policy, they never do. But we need to have a policy in place, and I think that's important. I also wanted to caution you when it comes to turf fields. So, you just said that a turf field has a life of 10 years, and maybe it's longer depending on how much use it gets and how much sun it gets and whatnot. But we were, we were pretty careful about discussing this when I ran Park and Rec, which is that when a group like this Ram Spirit Fund puts up millions of dollars and puts up a turf field, it's a wonderful thing that they do for the town, but there's an equal and offsetting liability that they're giving to town to replace that field 10 years out. Now, we're seeing that at Dunning right now. So, here we are, and we have to replace Dunning Field because it's starting to degrade, and we don't have the money. So, now we're going to go out, we're going to try to raise the money, but there could be a time where that becomes impossible. So, if we don't think ahead and put aside money in the beginning to replace that field 10 years out, we could get to a place 10 years from now where we can't use Dunning Stadium. And I think that would be tragic, and I don't think, I think we need to have much more foresight than that. So, I think it's great that we're putting GURF fields in. I think it'll give us opportunities to have practices when we otherwise couldn't. You know, the fields won't be full of mud, but we're really putting on this town a tremendous liability 10 years out, and we need to be absolutely certain that there is a remedy for that.
Scott, I think you were the first person in New Canaan that recognized that that wasn't the issue that it really is. And I think many people, a lot of the discussions that have happened subsequently have to do with looking at ways, if you had all these fields, to maybe run a lacrosse tournament in the summer. Percentage of that money every year goes into the turf replacement fund. Maybe we have a large soccer tournament, and it can benefit the merchants downtown, and a percentage of the proceeds from that go back into a turf replacement fund. So, I think you were the first one in town that actually started to talk about that. But a lot of people, that's not, people are thinking in that way and talking about that going forward with respect to this project and, you know, looking at how can all these fields help create some income that will help defray most or much of the cost of replacement.
Yeah, the swimming pool was that sort of thing, you know. It creates a fund that replaces itself down the road. And if we could find some way that the GURF fields could do the same, I think that would be, that would be, that would be great. And I'm also happy, by the way, to see that you're going to attempt to bring back some of the positive aspects of homecoming. I think that's important as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, Diane, and then down to Penny.
Thanks, Jay. I had a question about coach evaluations and sort of, one, who conducts those evaluations? And sort of, what are sort of coaches evaluated on and sort of that process? And if you have a coach that's a problem or an exemplary coach, how that, how that is translated to them and, you know?
The head coaches evaluate the assistant coaches, and I evaluate the head coaches. And so, the evaluation that I do on the head coaches, for the head coaches, is something that, there's a number, there's a number of indicators given, certain, a list of coaching competencies. I don't really, I don't have those. I can certainly get that to you. I can get you that document. And then, we also go through a goal-setting activity. So, before the season, we set goals for the, the coach and I set goals for the season, and then we look at, the coach and I discuss if they, what their goals were, how they met them, and some of the criteria that we can use to verify that in fact they've met those goals. You know, a lot of the narrative that I would write would have some identification of areas of improvement. And if there were coaches that, you know, if there were some team chemistry issues that we noticed, or if there's recurring complaints about lack of communication on the part of the coach. And one of the actions that I've taken in those situations is I would create a list of questions based on recurring comments that come my way about coaches. And then, I think the best way to find out about that is to interview athletes. So, I will anonymously, as far as they're concerned, have interviews with athletes on various levels, gather that data, and then share that data with the coach on areas of concern that I've had with respect to their program. So, I think it's a model that is a reflective model, I would say. Coaches and me reflecting on their work and then looking for ways to improve. I'm always looking for a way to improve that instrument, to be honest with you. And I'd like to look at ways that mirror more the teacher evaluation model where there is, it's more data-focused, and they, so if we're talking about positive team dynamics, what are ways, what are some ways that we have tried to create positive team dynamics? Is there, is there a mission statement that reflects that it's most important to us that everybody tries hard and people are valued in certain ways? You know, that, that's where I would like to go with the model. The model right now is a reflection on the coach's practice. And I, each head coach has a evaluation which, you know, we, it's on file, and it's official, and they sign it. And so, it's not just conversation, it's around the evaluation instrument.
Thank you. And then I just had one other comment or request. With, in the future, when we, when you show us comparative athletic budgets, if you could add in per pupil, because I think it's more, you know, it gives us better information because obviously, we're the smallest program of anybody we're, we're being evaluated against. So, a raw number is difficult to actually analyze. So, it would be helpful in the future to have that, but thank you.
Penny?
I just wanted to commend you on the kind of solidification of the captains' selection policy. I know it's been a cause for concern in the past, and I think having criteria out there that students know is terrific. So, I hadn't known that that was going on, and I think that's great. Also, the attention to safety is fabulous. And thank you for your whole presentation. I guess maybe one little pet thing, we have these seven new fabulous tennis courts, and is there any opportunity that we could have some sort of a fall program for either SAC students who might be interested or high school students who, I mean, at a high school, I know the sport's in the spring, but I don't, I know there are a lot of other sports that have travel teams and things like that. There's no official.
That's a nice idea. I could talk to Ben about that, I'm sure. The SAC tennis club would be, because they have nice weather. There's nice, there's probably eight nice, eight weeks of good weather.
Yeah, I just thought it could be.
Everybody's not used it.
A nice use of the.
You have the perfect person for that, too.
He's over there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Allison?
I just have a quick one, just, I'm just curious. You had mentioned that we've moved or we're moving away from the teacher-coach model, and you mentioned it's kind of a common phenomenon with the other school systems. Do you know why we're getting away from that? Because I agree with you. I think that's really optimal if we could do that.
I think, unfortunately, I don't hate to simplify it, but I think it has to do with the congestion and the travel and what it does to someone's day if they, if a teacher can leave at 3:30 or 4 o'clock, or if they have to leave at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, no matter where they live, and I think that's, that's part of it. You know, it's not uncommon for a young father to come and say, "Look, you know, I can't be away from my family. It's taking too much time away. I really, you know, it's..." Because the compensation, many times, if they're in that mindset, doesn't necessarily offset the time they are away from their family. And I do think the coaches that live closer and that don't have 95 or Meara Parkway commutes and can come back and forth, I think there's, they're, they're more willing to spend the extra time. You know, these folks that have 45-minute or an hour commutes and have a young family. That's what I've been told in the conversations I've had with a lot of young coaches that, you know. Well, and then maybe they go forward in their career. Evan Remley's a good example of someone who's gone forward in his career because he's got his own 92, and he wants, he's interested in. because he's got his own 92, and he wants, he's interested in, in educational administration. He was our indoor, outdoor, and cross-country coach for 10 or so years, was fabulous, had a great relationship with our students. You know, Steve Bedard is another example, he was our boys' track coach, and our boys' track has been a difficult, the winter particularly, and Steve won a couple of state championships when he was our coach and was very popular, had really large participation numbers. So, that's one factor, I think, the transportation, and then some of these real talented folks that move on in their careers.
Okay, I think one thing we all know as coaches, don't do it for the money.
They don't do it for the money, Allison.
We know what we pay them, we know how hard they work.
Wish we could, but there's no way.
Right, right. Thank you.
Sherry.
So, again, Jay, congrats on the success of your program. And specifically, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the captain's leadership program that you've really been grooming, and the positive impact that those captains have had on school climate. So, I think, I think that's wonderful. I had two things. First is, I did want to echo Scott's comments about looking at the funding of the non-SEAC, FCAC sports. And just to remind that, we committed last winter to, to looking at this, and I think, I just want to make sure we do that in a timely manner before this next budget cycle, which would really be, give us the next few months to really work through that and talk about that, and try to get some consensus on that. And I think when the squash program came in and presented to us, it really wasn't in my mind about squash, per se, but about continuing to look at how we can encourage healthy extracurricular opportunities for as many students as possible, to be as inclusive as possible. So, I just want to underscore that. You know, and I'd be happy if you were putting together a committee, I'd be happy to serve on that, or I'm not sure, you know, if that's something that you, you're working on alone, but I, that's very important. And then the second thing is, my second point is a question that I frequently get about parents' perceptions about equity across the different sports. And sometimes I think parents may see a certain sport or team get more accessories or more new uniforms, and they may or may not understand, you know, how that's funded. And so, can you just talk through kind of what the BOE budget and the all-sports booster fund, funds versus like the student fund that would do the enrichment, as you called it? Can you just kind of talk about that in a little more detail, and about how we ensure equity across all the different sports programs?
So, we have our Board of Education budget for equipment and supplies. And so, we determine on a rotating basis when we purchase equipment, when we purchase uniforms. Some equipment we have to purchase every year for, for, almost all sports have equipment that they need every year. Generally, we have a two-year cycle on, on, on uniforms, and on occasion, people will want to donate money for uniforms. So, if somebody wanted to donate, let's say what we're talking about. So, if somebody wanted to donate money for football jerseys, okay, the only way that that money could be, would be, could be accepted by New Canaan Public Schools would be through the Booster Club. They are not to buy, in my conversation with the captains, the parents, the coaches, no one is to buy, no goods or services should, can be bought directly for any particular sport. So, that's the way we can assure that we know how the, how the programs are being enriched. And the, when a program is enriched, if somebody asks, if someone's gonna donate $7,000 for, of football uniforms, I'm never gonna buy football jerseys again. And I'm gonna spend the money that I could, would have spent on football jerseys on soccer uniforms, or feel like, we're buying new feel, it's a good example, because we're buying new feel-hockey uniforms this year. So, what I've, what I, what we're trying to do, and what, you know, there's a lot of, it's done a lot, in a lot of places around the country, the model for enriching athletic programs in communities like New Canaan is to have one, one way that funds are donated, and to be assured that you can maintain equity based on all the other resources that you have. So, if someone said to us at some point, "Hey, here's $50,000, I want to buy all, I want to buy purple football helmets, so we can wear them, you know, pink football helmets, so we can wear them in October," we would have to say no, because there was no way that we could offset that, that enrichment to football for any of our other sports. So, that, that's, that's the equity piece. I have looked at the coaching salaries, I have looked at the number of coaches that are, that we have in each sport, and I have looked at the, the amount of funding that has gone, male versus female, and we're within less than $1,000 difference. So, we have, we have equity with respect to coaching. So, we're, I'm constantly monitoring the program for all of these areas of equity, facilities, equipment, coaching, uniforms, even as far as participation is concerned, I mean, it's kind of, we're also responsible for equity with respect to participation. And so, if we have a program like softball, who sometimes has less numbers of students participating, we have to make certain efforts before the students come to New Canaan High School for opportunities in softball, or show that we've made, this is part of our responsibility with respect to equity. So, we're also, we also do that. Our coaches provide clinics in softball to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So, you know, if the numbers are low, it's, we've done everything that we can do to, to create and stimulate interest. So, you know, the, the term they use is meeting, you know, meeting substantial interest with respect to the Title IX. So, that's, that's my answer.
Great, thank you.
That's very helpful. Any other questions? Yes, Jan?
So, thank you so much, this was so informative, the program is so exciting, and it's great to be a part of it. And I also wanted to personally thank Diane, really, I've been in there, I've been taped thousands of times by you and all of our kids, and it's so nice to know that you're there, and the safety is such an important part of the program. So, thank you. I, I'm happy that you mentioned about when, you know, when things happen and kids get in trouble, and that, you know, you try to stay on the download, and work with the families and stuff, because I, I hear parent, people talking a lot on the sidelines or whatever, complaining that people aren't getting in trouble, and that they're playing, and it's, you know, I know that you guys handle it, and I think it's important to know that parents know that it is being handled, and that you're not, you know, it's not media blitzed everywhere, but, you know, because I know it's kind of a touchy thing, but, you know, I do hear it a lot, that parents think that they're not, so. Anyway, and then the other thing I just wanted to ask about the fields, with the new turf fields, I know there are some parents, again, hearing people talk, and we've discussed this too, about, you know, people are concerned about the materials and everything. Have you heard, I mean, has there been any direction in that? And the other question, I know they said, like, if they didn't raise enough money, that it would be on hold, or has there been any decisions in any of that?
We have another year, so, we don't think, you know, I, I, talking to the people that are involved in the project, you know, we don't, we don't, we think that we're going to be able to raise the money. I'm glad you asked me that, because I should have mentioned this before, but Jim Dunning is also involved in that Ram Spirit Fund. Jim is the one who basically funded Dunning Stadium. And, you know, even though, he said, he, his comment to me was, "I've done this once already," he still wants to see it done again. And he doesn't, his son now lives in New Canaan, he doesn't even live in New Canaan anymore, he's already offered to, to help with this, with this initiative, and he's also offered to donate some, you know, significant amount of funds towards it. So, I, I'm confident that it's gonna get funded. You're referring to the infill in the turf, and the, the concern on some people that it's, there's carcinogenic effect of the, of the, of the tires, the infill, okay, turf is shag carpet with crum, with crumpled-up rubber put down on top of it, with a drainage system underneath it. It's not really that high-tech. And so, it, it's the concern about the rubber, and what the rubber consists of, and if, if that is carcinogenic or dangerous. So, I have some information from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that's, they, they sent out to Town of Needham, and they looked at all of the issues, and this was 2015, by the way, so it was just this spring. And they answer all of the questions with respect to, to the concerns that people have in the community. And, you know, what they say, we stated in our letters to Needham officials, "While available information does not indicate exposure, opportunities of health concern, Massachusetts Board of Public Health continues to recommend common sense ways to minimize any potential exposure to chemicals that maybe contain a synthetic, the turf made of crumb rubber. Washing your hands before eating, particularly for young children," you know, it's not, there's no evidence that substantiates the cancer risk for crumb rubber fields, of crumb rubber fields. And, you know, this is, I have, we have a study that was done in the state of Connecticut, we have this information that was, it's fresh from 2015, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts answering this question from one of their municipalities. And then we have more, another information sheet from the New York Department of Public Health, which answers the questions that everybody's asking about the safety of the crumb rubber, and there's no evidence that, that it causes cancer. You know, this is, I love, that's one, the one thing I like about this job, because I learned something, I learn so much so often. But, in this letter from Massachusetts, it just talks about these three common kinds of cancers, and the latency, the latency period for the cancer to develop, which is over 10 years. And so, these allegations of the cancer out on the West Coast being caused by kids who are goalies, it doesn't, it doesn't line up. You know, these are anecdotal reports of, of soccer players that have gotten certain forms of cancer, but it doesn't necessarily, according to the information in this document, it really doesn't, there's not enough time for the cancers, those types of cancers to develop, based on what this report says. So, you know, I, I understand that it's an, that's an, it's an important issue. And so, what I, I wanted to say about this is that we've looked at options. And right now, we don't see an option that is, is been proven or is viable with respect to the sports that are played on it. There's a lot of options that have some natural infill with a pad underneath. Turf fields are measured with what's called G-force, and that's how long the, the turf takes to bounce back when some, something presses it down. And football requires a certain number, and these, these new fields do not provide that kind of cushioning. So, that's why people aren't putting them in. Darien didn't put it in, St. Luke's put in crumb rubber, Fairfield Ludlow put in crumb rubber this summer, and Brian McMahon put in, replaced their field with, with crumb rubber, and Norwalk built a baseball field with crumb rubber. So, you know, I, I understand that this is a concern, and I don't take that lightly, and that's why we have the research, and that's why I'm happy to talk about it. And, you know, in 10 years, if you ask me this question, there may be something that's developed that takes this, whatever concern or risk that may be, out of the picture. Right now, and we've talked to turf companies, and, you know, we, we, again, understand it's important, we don't really see that it's a health concern, and we don't really see, you know, a viable option. So. I know I've spoken for a long time, I just wanted to say one thing that I think is important as far as the captain's leadership program and some of the work that we've done. Through Garland Allen, who's a New Canaan, he's a New Canaan resident, Garland is a former athletic director at Greenwich, and he's a former athletic director at Ridgewood High School in New Jersey, and he's now a, a teaching professor at NYU. NYU was commissioned by Stephen Ross, who's the owner of the Miami Dolphins, to, to look into civility in sport. And so, there's a, they, they formed a commission with a lot of really bright guys, a couple of the guys live in New Canaan, and they're looking at all aspects of sport from, not the wins and losses, but from, from all the affective components. And through, through our association with Garland, our league is involved as a, we are, we're a trial league as far as our captain's leadership programs, looking at our captain's leadership programs, looking at our school cultures. And so, we brought our captains on, last March, down to NYU and spent, spent the day, they're actually all the captains from all of the schools in the FCAC. And they started talking about, they actually talked about our program, our captain's leadership program, as, as a model program, mostly because we have a school psychologist and an athletic director working together, and, in creating this environment for students. So, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of that, I really enjoy working with Sandy, she's awesome, she gives up her time for this program, and, you know, she's great at the things that I'm terrible at, sitting in circles and team group work and stuff like that, that's not, and I know it's important, it's not my strength. Believe it or not, Gary.
This has been, this has been very educational for all of us.
Thank you.
We're, we're gonna hold you for one minute, I saw, one more question, then we'll close down, if that's all right with everybody, and the two questions. Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, Jay, I just wanted to comment about the policy of, I, I would like there to be, you know, in a, in a utopian world, a no-cut policy for athletics. Now, I recognize that the higher up into the high school we get, the more impossible that becomes. But, you know, a kid comes into school, and we've talked about this a number of times, a kid comes into school at 13 years of age, and he is neither physically nor mentally the kid that he's gonna be, even a year later or two. And if we cut a kid from a sport that he loves because he's not physically capable yet of being the player that he will be, we've lost him for life. And I hate to see that. So, wherever possible, I understand that there are some sports where, where absolutely contained, golf is one of them, there's only so many tee times that we can get. But I, but even to the extent that if your budget were to show an increase for coaching to allow for more kids to participate, I recognize there has to be safety standards, and there has to be a desire to, a shown desire by the student-athlete to perform and to commit at a level. But, given all of that, I would really like to see us be as, you know, continue to push the envelope and be as lenient as we can on cutting particularly the younger kids.
Can I just second that, because I've, I've become aware of how many kids are now receiving offers from the colleges in very young ages, which is something that I, I don't see as positive.
I don't either.
For their academic careers as well as their athletic careers, so.
That's shameful.
I think what Scott's talking about is something that has a lot of issues to it, a lot of sides to it.
And Scott, I, you know, that's something, you, you've mentioned that to me on a number of occasions, and, and as a result of what you've said to me, on, on a number of occasions, we've had 30-plus boys come out for, for soccer. And I've gone to the Booster Club, and I've asked them for funds for a second coach, and we've split the team. And so, we've created, you know, like a red and a black team. And it's easy enough for us to get each of those teams 10 games. And so, that's, we've tried to keep as many kids alive in the sport as we can. We've also done that with baseball. And so, we've had incidences with baseball where we've had one team at New Canaan practicing, and another team would go and play. And then we've just, we've just tried to keep, you know, to your point, the maturation, you never know what's gonna happen. So, we, we've done that when we can. The only place that we've never been able to solve that problem is in basketball, and it's just such a constraint on gym time throughout the whole community, that between the boys' programs and the girls' programs and the three levels, that it's been difficult for us to do it in basketball. We've kept large teams, and we've tried not to cut anybody. I, I agree with you, I hope that, that's the worst day in any coach's life, I can tell you that. So, we, we're making a, a real effort to never have to do that.
I know you are, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Allison, you had another question or comment?
Actually, just very quickly, I just want to piggyback on what they were saying about your, the positivity in sports, and, and really bringing to the kids the, the whole attitude of being positive in, in sports, because I know now, in terms of looking at professional sports, you know, we just have to look at preseason play football to see teammates, taking out teammates for the season. So, they certainly can't be looking, you know, I mean, I know there are a lot of positive role models in professional sports, too, but certainly there are a lot of negative, and I think just with the media being the way it is, that's what makes the papers. So, I really appreciate you kind of enforcing that and emphasizing that, especially in high school, because I think they take that with them through life, and as they become coaches. I know a lot of athletes will go on to become coaches for their own children or for their community, and I think that's really important. Also, the second point, just quickly, is for the board, is to, you know, just to remind the board, this is the third presentation we've had probably in several months where we see the generosity of our community. And you talked about the Spirit Fund, you talked about the, the Booster Club. We have an incredibly generous, appropriate, generously, appropriately generous budget from the town. But, it's a reminder to the town, too, that to have the facilities that we have, and to run the programs we do at the level that we do and have the success that we do, what the true cost of running these programs are. And to look at, we've talked about, we've had PTC money, multiple PTCs come to us and generously donate, so it's, and, as well as what we just talked about today. So, and it's not just the money, but it's the time. It's the time that the community, you mentioned tonight, Jim Dunning, you know, someone who doesn't have anyone currently invested in the, in the programs here, but people who are willing to go above and beyond. And we can't forget that as a community, that that's so important, and that really, it's somebody like that and all the other people who are involved who make our community what it is. So, when we're fighting for dollars at budget season, or things are being nitpicked, we have to re- have to remember what the true cost of our program are. And I just want to say, I know we all truly appreciate the time and the effort and the money that people are willing to put to give our kids the experience and opportunities that they do.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for saying that.
We look forward to your coming back and answering the questions that still are going to be on the table, and obviously, we enjoy hearing about it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Looking at our agenda, and we have our second, Mr. Cass, who is going to present our, do you have anything that you wanted to preface that?
No, I think, Gary can take it. So, thank you. I distributed at your place is two enrollment reports. The first one is the full district enrollment report, so we can take a look at the numbers at the elementary, middle, and high school. And, you know, the number that we had talked about the last time I was here was monitoring kindergarten numbers. And today, you see, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight is the number, and just several weeks ago, we were talking about, did we think that number was going to go up? And, we all thought it would. It hasn't. It has, you know, there's still a couple of weeks to go, but the number's holding at two-eighty-eight. Our projection, as you see, is three-oh-four, but overall, this year, across the board, we have not, first summer in at least three years, where we have not added any additional teaching staff. We are actually still one teacher below in the elementary level in terms of budget. And the numbers, as predicted from NSDEC, show that an increase of forty-four students at Saks. The numbers are continuing to trend upward at Saks. We saw the projection last October first, and now we see, we see that number at Saks continuing to, to go up. And this year, forty-four students more than October first of last year. And the high school has twelve-fifty-nine this year, and you can see that still very close to, to projection. The other handout I always like to give you for your interest in elementary class size guidelines is the elementary report that shows the number of sections and then the average class size by school, by grade. And, it's always a great one to, to look at. Our numbers show that we are, by and large, below the class size guidelines, except for grade three, where we are showing approximately one student above the class size guidelines in grade three, as it was last year in grade two. So, our, wanted you to have that information, and looks like our, still with two weeks to go before school starts, you never know what happens in these last two weeks before school starts, but right now, this is what our numbers look like.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cass. Any questions? Nope. Sherry?
So, Gary, I just have a question. The matriculation from elementary to fifth grade, is that pretty standard in terms of, you know, the drop-off of, say, thirteen students? Is that pretty standard over the years? And then, a follow-on question is just based on everything you've, are seeing, which is holding very, very close to the NSDEC projections, would that verify all of the Saks projections that we've been talking about as part of the building project?
Well, for the, for the second question, I would say, the numbers are trending exactly how we talked about it last October. The numbers are going up, and, and we certainly can see it here. Your other question around numbers going into Saks, is that, you can see kind of the feeder grades coming in for this year are fairly close to the, the three-forty-four in grade five this year. So, we're kind of looking at that, you know, we've always seen this pattern at Saks where you see one, one small grade, one large grade, one small grade, one large grade, and now it looks like those numbers are coming in right around the three-forty-four, fourth grade is three-thirty-seven.
So, my question though, so, you attract like from fourteen-fifteen, the fourth grade, which is at three-fifty-seven, to track into the fifteen, sixteen, fifth grade, which is three-forty-four, so it's a, you know, a net loss of thirteen students. I'm just wondering, is that pretty standard? I know we have some students who choose to matriculate, who either move out of town and matriculate to private, or, I guess I'm just wondering, is there, are there students who are concerned? There's been a lot of discussion about Saks being over capacity. Do you find that this is more students than typical?
I still see they're coming to Saks.
Yeah.
And I see these numbers growing. That seems to be, seems to still be the trend.
And specifically, you know, that, the fourth grade to fifth grade, it has, if you look back over ten years, there has been a slight downtrend in the fourth to fifth grade.
Right, that's what, yeah.
That's factored into all of the projections, you know, as we look at.
It's actually one of the only grades that we have that has a below-one factor.
Right.
You know, where, when that, when they make that transition fourth, fourth to fifth, but then they do tend to.
But that's remain steady.
Go back up as they go.
Right.
You know, go through those grades. The, we added on the first sheet that Gary was talking about, we added the Prada projections as well. As you remember, we had a, a second demographer take a look at our numbers. And so, I, I think, you know, as we had discussed earlier, it was likely to trend somewhere in the middle, you know, with the Prada numbers and then the NSDEC numbers, and the kindergarten being the most difficult to predict. And we see that that's indeed almost exactly what happened, where Prada came in low at two-seventy-one for those kindergarten numbers, and NSDEC came in what looks to be a little bit high at, at three-oh-four. So, that kindergarten number coming in this year, if it's, remains at two-eighty-eight, is right between the NSDEC and Prada projections, which I think would indicate support for, for the discussions we've been having with Saks.
Any other questions?
The, the other piece that I just wanted to mention is that, you know, one of the most exciting times of the year is happening right here in this room tomorrow, as many of you know. New teacher induction will take place right here tomorrow morning at eight AM, and it's always a very exciting time where we'll welcome thirty-four teachers that are new to the district and five administrators, and we go through a variety of activities to help prepare them to teach in New Canaan. So, I know Dr. Lutz is speaking, and Mrs. Hobbs, we know you'll, you'll, you'll be joining us, and as well as the New Canaan High School PFA co-presidents will be here, and, and many members of our administrative staff will be presenting to, to the new, new faculty members.
Thank you very much.
And just to take a quick moment to thank our, first, our elementary principals, Jill and Gary, who've been really very closely monitoring, you know, this enrollment all through the summer. It still is amazing to watch them talk and process and think, and every one of the registrations, they're, they're calling from the building level to talk about, are you coming, aren't you coming, where are you? And, you know, maybe it'd be helpful to get that paperwork in today instead of tomorrow. You know, those kinds of conversations are going on all summer long. And also, to, to complement our technology staff with, where we've centralized registration, that has really been working very well for us this year. We've had some kinks to work out as we did the centralized registration, but now, having that at central office means that we have a very uniform, common approach to the work. And we've really been going through and really asking for updated paperwork and making sure that everything we have on file is appropriate for all of our students, you know, K-12 across the board, which I think is another important process that we go through to, it's almost sort of an internal audit that we're doing of the students, and maybe if they were on an affidavit of residency or something else, we're making sure that that paperwork we have is renewed annually, so that every student that's in the New Canaan public schools should be in the New Canaan public schools. And that's a benefit of the centralized registration that we put in place, the board put in place a few years ago. So, I think, you know, people have worked very hard on these numbers and, and really making those decisions, and the fact that, you know, we are, we're down one teacher going into the year based on, you know, sort of what we had budgeted, we thought we'd go, we'd be going up one, is really a credit to the work that our principals have done in saying, let's make a few more calls and let's just make sure before making that final decision. So, thanks to Dr. Karanti, Mr. Cass, and our principals for really so closely monitoring this throughout the summer. Makes a big difference, and I think it's a sign of the, the type of stewardship we have of district resources. Thank you.
That's terrific, thank you. Yes, Deanna?
I just wanted to, I just had one quick follow-on question on the, on the enrollment, and, and looking at sort of the high school enrollment versus the NSDEC and the Prada projections, I mean, we're, in my mind, we're significantly above their, their projections. And, sort of, as we cycle through sort of what's happening at Saks, and, and, you know, taking that forward four more years, I, I just want to make sure that we're keeping our eye on, you know, I mean, I know we built in extra capacity here, but I, I think none of us want to be in four years, coming back and having this discussion. So, I think, you know, I, I would be asking maybe that we start to take a look at sort of how that cycles through, beyond.
That's, it's a very important consideration. When we look at the facility, we anticipate that will be okay, looking at the numbers and things. When we look at our staffing, that's where it would be impacted. As we've said with Saks right along, that it's our enrollment that determines our staffing. As the enrollment in the high school goes up, then we will have to look at the number of sections we're able to offer, the classes and the program we have, and we may need to, to add some FTEs based on the number of students that we have in order to provide the program that we do. So, that's, but we do watch it very, very closely in those ways, but it's, it's an important consideration, and you're right, it's a conversation we should probably begin having so that as that, the group moves itself through Saks, and then, you know, if the numbers do play out the way we anticipate where they're going to stay at a, at a high level for a period of time, certainly, you know, what is, what are the budgetary implications of that? It's, we don't like surprises, so we want to have that conversation and go. And, you know, you do learn, as having been a high school principal for a long time, that really, people, they play with the numbers and do all kinds of things, but essentially, the high school will mirror the middle school. We have four years in the middle school, and, you know, we'll, we'll probably go up a little bit because we do pull in some, some new students typically in ninth grade from a variety of places, K-eight private schools and things, but it'll at least mirror the middle school, so we have to plan for that. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to our next topic, did you want to introduce the topic?
Love to. The, we thought it'd be very helpful to get a quick update on the facilities projects that are going on. We've had a very busy summer, and really, and Bob will come to our next meeting with the pictures and the, you know, the glossy photos, the whole thing. But, I thought tonight, prior to the beginning of the school year, it'd be helpful just to get a quick update on what's happening at South and at Saks, and then if there are any other questions that you might have, be able to answer those prior to the start of the school year. And then again, Bob will give us more detail on, at our meeting, and first meeting in September, but just to maybe allay some fears if they're out there, but provide some, some answers if you have some questions. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Keating.
Thank you. It's nice to be here in New Canaan in my first board meeting, so thank you. I wanted to start off by saying that Bob and I have had an opportunity to walk through all the schools. Facilities have been high on our list this summer, and there's a lot going on out in the school district. Just starting with Saks, we are, we are very close to completing the remediation program in the auditorium. Seats have been taken out, they're in storage right now with the vendor who's going to be resurface or refinishing them. The abatement is very close to being finished, if not complete. We're waiting on air samples to come back in so that we can have clearance for the start of school. So, that project really did take us very close to the end of the, the summer, but with all, we're very optimistic that it's going to go through. Excuse me, the allergies have been getting to me the last couple of days. With regards to the bigger project, we have gone through a process just recently, last Monday, interviewing or shortlisting, actually, the construction managers for the project, and we had six responses, and we've shortlisted to four. We did not have a mandatory walkthrough this past Thursday, but I do believe a few did come. Penny's been chairing that process. So, we're down to Turner, ONG, which are very big companies, AP and Newfield, all very well-experienced companies, so we're very optimistic that we're going to have a good CM join us for that project. We have an owner's rep, we have an architect, and now we have the CM on their way. If all goes well, we'll be before the other boards, I think in September, early September is the goal.
We will be putting out the schedule for approval with the funding.
Okay, good. And we're moving forward with the.
There will be, there will be a public hearing on Wednesday, September sixteenth, by the town council. I think that's the date. It's the general town council hearing. I think the funding approvals will be a little bit later in September than we thought originally.
Okay. But we are moving forward with the state process, so everything is moving, at least in, with regards to that approval process, as it should be. I think that's all on Saks. With regards to South, before we get to South, I did want to mention something in terms of West. We did hire a hydro geological engineer to look at the water issues that are over there. Initially, I think there was money to put aside for the auditorium or the gymnasium area. When Bob really started to take a look at it, there's water issues beyond that specific area, and so he thought it best to hire an engineer to really take a close look at it, to make sure that whatever solution we come up with, it's really going to take care of all of the issues that we have in that school. And so, that's taking place right now, and hopefully, we'll have some good information this fall, at least before we go into budget, because that is going to impact our capital budget, we expect there. With regards to South, very busy over there this summer as well. The windows have been taken out and remediated, all of the containment has been removed, the school has been cleared for occupation. The wood is going to remain on the windows because we do not have all the window systems delivered to the school. That's going to take place probably through the next couple of weeks, and so we'll be assembling and installing once school starts. And talking to Bob and the principal, Joanne Rocco, it shouldn't be a problem, I've actually had experience doing this in another district, you basically move classes around for a day or so. They pop in fairly quickly, and the project should be complete by the end of September, if not earlier, but we'll keep you updated on that.
And they'll be doing the work after school's out, right? They won't, won't be doing the work while school's in session?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be done after hours. So, they're really right in the process right now of trying to figure out a few things with the brackets, the window systems and frames coming in, and once that's complete, they'll just start the assembly and, and moving along there. The lower playground is complete, looks great, really nice job they did on that, and now they're starting on the upper playground, which was donated by the PTC, so that was a very nice gift, and that'll be nice. The, all of the curving around the front of the school has been replaced, Bob took care of that out of his operating budget, and the town has been kind enough to fix those very large potholes that were in the driveway there. Hopefully, that will be completed this week, and so we'll have a nice new facelift over at South. One of the things that has come up over at South that you might not know about is late in, I think, May, early June, Bob had all of the oil tanks pressure-tested, which is a, a good practice to do. Tanks came back fine. The supply lines at both South and East came back with some difficulties. With regards to South, the issue is more of a maintenance issue that can be handled within his budget and, and should be. And that's starting tomorrow, and it should be done by the end of the week, it's a few-day project. The slab is actually up in the front of the school, so it was timely to do it, and any monies we spend on that will be, just be less money we have to spend in the future when we go to replace the tanks in a few years. With regards to East, it became more of a, a problem area. I've been told by Bob that last year during the winter, through the entire heating season, he was having trouble keeping the boilers running because there was some water getting into the tanks, and they had to actually pump it out almost on a thirty-minute basis. And they really couldn't diagnose at that time where the problem was coming from. And with the testing that they did on the tanks, they discovered the problem, and it was in the lines. And, and the water is coming back in through the lines. So, in order to get through heating season this year, we really do need to do this project. And it's best to get it done before school starts because the line literally goes right across the bus loop. So, that's going to start tomorrow as well. We went out to bid, we felt it was an emergency, went out to bid, our original thoughts it was, it was going to be in the low seventy thousand range. It, the bids came back with all of the alternates at the eighty-one thousand five hundred you see here for the transfer. That would be the, the outside for the actual replacement. However, as they go through this process, we have to. However, as they go through this process, we have to do some testing to make sure there's no environmental issues. And if there are, we're going to have to have a further discussion with regards to how we, you know, deal with that particular issue.
And all of this has been done with the Connecticut DEP?
Right, the EPA, or the DEEP actually came in and took a look at it, and so we have to follow the EPA guidelines with regards to replacement.
Makes sense. Thank you for bringing us up to date on those situations. Does anyone have any questions? I think we're all understanding what's happening. Thank you. Oh, Penny. Penny, sorry.
So just with respect to East then, there's the concern that if water was getting into the system, that oil was getting out of the system, and that's what the testing's going to have to be? Or what is it?
No, the oil, there's not, there's no evidence that oil is out of the system. It's just when it was getting in through, feeding into the boiler plant, you know, they had to basically, it was, you know, water was in that fuel. So they were having to clean it out on a very regular basis.
No, I was just wondering what the environmental issues were that we were waiting to hear back on.
Well, when the line was tested, it came back that there was a potential for a fracture. So that's why you have to test.
Okay.
Yes, we do. This is one test we'd like to fail.
Yes. We're hoping.
Dr. Keating, thank you.
You might want to know that the initial tests did come back without any findings, so hopefully we'll have a good result there. But Bob will have a full report next month, and I think you'll be happy with every, the schools are looking great, everything's clean, are getting there, and we'll be ready for the kids.
So for that East oil tank, that's the action item, the second action item here, which is the transfer of funds. In order to fund that, it's a big number and we didn't anticipate it, we didn't know about it when we were building the budget, you know, for this next year. So due to the timeliness, you know, the urgency of this, we're looking to make a transfer of it, and then we have more conversations with the, with the town and the funding bodies around possible reimbursement for that amount as we, as we go forward.
Yeah, I was going to ask, can we go after special appropriation based on the size of it?
We could, you know, we could, we could look for that. The thing, it's the timing of that and our need to really drive to get this, get this done before we start the school year, given the, where it is and that we need it for heat, you know, not that today we need any heat.
No, I'm not suggesting it's coming.
But soon enough it's coming, yeah. Yeah, so, so we will, you know, this is a way to get this going, and then we'll continue and follow up and see that piece through. Okay, so we can vote on that when we get there, I guess. Somebody wanted to just make that connection.
Yes, everybody has those, that's in mind, hold on to it, we're going to vote on it in a minute or two, maybe a few more minutes.
Just a couple.
Yes, looking down at our next action, the first action item is the district goals.
What is the statement of accounts?
Oh, sorry, I thought that was, oh, the, excuse me, that was changed, I'm sorry. Please.
It's slightly, it's changed in that we thought we'd just give an update on where we are as far as our year-end close.
Yes.
As you know, Joanne coming in July 1 and making the transition, and we have a new budget director who's starting in another week, and we eagerly anticipate her beginning. So I thought that just an opportunity for Joanne to touch base, you know, with the board and just share where we are.
Sure, we are in the process of closing out FY 2015 books, and that started today, actually, with the staff. So we should have most of our adjusting journal entries done by the end of the week, early next week, and then the state reporting will take place the following week, by the 31st I have to have everything into the state. I will be doing the EDO-1 and all the federal reporting myself this year. So that should, I will have a very clear handle on any potential questions that we have coming into the district with regards to reporting. So that's that. You will have two reports then in September. One will be the final report for the general fund, state grants, the donations fund, and cafeteria. So we'll have a comprehensive final statement for you in September, and I'll have your first statement of accounts for this current fiscal year at that time as well. So I'm looking forward to delivering that report. One thing that we did want to share with you today is Brian and I had an opportunity to speak with the finance board in June, and one of the topics that they were curious about was our health insurance, in particular, the internal services fund, where we might come out with claims and that sort of thing. And so I had an opportunity to meet with Steve Rinaldi and Brian, and we talked a lot about the claims, and we had claims data through the end of June, but what we don't have yet is the IBNR. Does everybody, everybody's probably very familiar with that. And generally speaking, the IBNR just fluctuates by, you know, the change and the incremental change is what's going to impact that. But since I didn't have that number, I didn't want to go too far with that. But one thing I did want to make you aware of, because I did make them aware of it, is that the claims in 2014 were 10,770, and that's without any accruals. The claims in 2015, without any accruals, 12,865. That's a 19.5% change in claims. Now, we may have hit an attachment point on a specific claim, you know, Steve is going to look at that for us, which would drop this number, but that's a pretty significant change. And so we kind of dove a little bit deeper into those numbers. And what we really, what I really realized is that back in 2014, you had 160 claimants of 10,000 and over. In 2015, that number rose to 208. That's a significant increase, that's a 25% increase in that band of claimants. And more so, the way it was dispersed between, you know, 50,000, 100,000, 152, so forth. So it's really telling how the volatility in claims can have an impact on your, your actual claims that you have to reserve for in the beginning of the year. And while the 208 claimants were higher than the 160 the year before, the actual high, high claims were lower. So it's very difficult to really reserve for claims, and I think it's a conversation that as we move forward towards the budget process, we're going to want to have, you know, a workshop or some kind of a dialogue where we just really focus in on this because in any given year, it can really skew your annual budget increases and your annual tax rates for the town. So we thought we'd share that one with you.
Yep. And-
Yes.
Just a quick question, Dr. Keating. First of all, I didn't realize it was your first meeting, so welcome.
It's my first official, thank you.
Is there any correlation that we can draw between having moved from a regular, yeah, PP, oh, to an HSA in the way that the claims have jumped, either in number or amount?
You know, that's a question that would be better answered by Steve Rinaldi. In my experience with HSA's over the last five, six years, claims have dropped because of the assumed consumerism that's built into an HSA program. But I think we're coming to realize that these high deductible plans, you know, really work upfront, but once you hit your deductible and you're at 100%, consumerism just isn't even on your radar screen.
On the contrary, I think, I mean, yeah, I agree with you, but even more so, I think that eating, it almost encourages you to, well, I'm over my deductible, I might as well get everything I can think I've done because next year I'm going to try to stay under. But I'm wondering, and I guess we won't know, and we won't know until we have a number of years of evidence, but I'm just wondering if this is moving in a sort of the opposite direction we had hoped. We just need to keep a look at it, I guess.
Yeah, it's something to explore for sure. One of the things we did do is look at our specific and our aggregate stop loss, and we have made a decision to move to a consortium for that and drop the aggregate from 125 to 120. It gives a little bit more, you know, comfort level with your maximum exposure in terms of claims. The specific is still a 300, and quite frankly, we couldn't get another vendor to bring, come below the 300, because once you hit it and you want to go below it, you know, they're suspicious.
And they think you know something they don't know.
Yeah.
The other piece around insurance costs and working to contain them is we, we have put out an RFP for an audit, a dependability, a usage audit essentially, so that all of our users of the insurance plan will show that they are eligible for, for the plan. So we, we have a couple of vendors who are working on putting together their proposals for that. It would be an electronic portal, I think that was, that was written into the specs of this, so people would be scanning in maybe birth certificates or whatever and be able to upload that. But the dependent, the eligibility audit, according to Steve, is something that will help us. You know, he says, when he does these, he doesn't with different districts, he said generally they do find a few folks who, for whatever reason, are still on the plan and they're able to move them out. So we've been talking with teachers' unions, some other folks that were going to be doing this. We'll get the school year started and get everything rolling, and then we'll kind of, you know, roll this out from there.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Now I'll say thank you, Dr. Keating. We'll get back to you shortly in just a minute as we do the district goals, the second read.
So you have in front of you a clean copy of the district goals. You have, we incorporated the changes from our last meeting. We also had an opportunity to share these with the administrative team at our retreat last week, and they had a chance to go through them. And there's, there were one or two small changes as a result of that, not, more language. Instead of the mentoring advisory program at the high school, which is what it was called, we've renamed it Connections. So we wanted that reflected in the goals, so the language is correct. And we bring it before you as, for our second read and approval if you approve. And Dr. Karanti, you're welcome to join in if you like at any time.
Just to point out a few other of the changes, in Goal 1, Objective 3, we added the word "international," that was a suggestion. In Goal 1, Objective 4, C, we incorporated with our digital citizenship curriculum, making sure that we continue to review our K through 4 and 10 through 12 grade implementation as well.
Penny?
I think these look great. I had one question with respect to 6C. It says we're going to analyze and report on the percentage of students graduating proficient in a second language as measured by the indicators above. And I, you know, we would probably do this, but it strikes me that, I can't remember when Lizette D'Amico presented, but there's a level above proficient. I don't know if it's fluent or if there's something in between, but it'd be interesting to me to see how we do at getting students to proficient, I know that's our goal, but then also how we do, what number of students we actually get to a level higher than proficient.
Sure, and we can, we'll use the ACTFOL standards when we do that. I will say that more language teachers tell me that proficient is a high standard, probably higher than the word, than proficient denotes. You know, it's, if you're proficient according to the ACTFOL, the triangle they use as they put it together, that's, you're pretty, you're well-versed with the language. But we'll, there are others, and, yeah, we've reported all that out. It's a continuum.
Maybe it doesn't make sense, you would know where the students are and what the reporting would be, but that just struck me, it might be some, it might be interesting that data, I'll defer to you all on it.
And we certainly can have Mrs. D'Amico come and do a presentation and give you the baseline information that we have.
Yep.
Great.
Any questions or comments? I think they're, they're very thoughtful, all of the goals and the various objectives that go in with them, and definitely a meaty group of goals-
Yes, they are.
-to be working on. Makes us all, I think, feel very good about what's happening. If there are no other questions or comments, does anybody want to? Yes, thank you, Deanna.
I move to approve the-
Move to-
Yeah, so, I guess we just vote, we just vote.
Yes, okay.
All in favor?
Yes, all in favor? Penny, all in favor?
I think we have to move to approve them as amended, rather than, because we, oh, right, because you-
That's true, they changed. That's right, they were changed.
So I move to approve at the amended, amended goal.
Second, second on that. Thank you, Sheri, all those in favor of approving with amended. And that is everybody that's here now to move. Thank you very much. That's hard work from anybody that's been working on that, to look back on the transfer of funds now. And we've heard a wonderful explanation about that, and anything else that you want to add to that, or are we?
Um, no, I'm happy to answer the questions.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Penny.
I just want to know, where's the money, where's the 81,505 coming from?
I knew you'd ask. It's good to be predictable. Bob was out last week, so I wanted to review it with him today before I made any commitments. But as it stands right now, we have some unencumbered funds in professional services and contracted services within his budget. And while those are designated for certain uses, they are available right now.
I'm sorry, within whose budget?
Bob's budget.
Bob's budget, okay.
Yeah, so the money is coming from the facilities budget.
Oh, wow, okay.
The purchase service and other pieces, but it is, you know, we weren't taking, we didn't want to move out of, you know, an instructional line or anything like, so we stayed within the facilities piece.
So is that coming within, for which budget year is it coming from?
From this budget year.
From 2015, '16?
Yes.
Correct. And we will monitor it very closely because we anticipate needing those funds as the year goes on.
Deanna?
So I just, I think we all should, you know, should get clarity on how soon do we think we will be approaching the Board of Finance to replenish these funds? Because they, they are emergency funds and, you know, they weren't in the budget, and so, you know, I don't think, I think all of us would feel more comfortable that, that we get the money back and aren't having to, you know, manage it in the long time to the very last minute. So if we could get a little more clarification around that.
Sure, well, I think as soon as we complete the project, because we may go through if it does unfortunately turn out to be that we have to do some remediation as well in the soil, and depending upon what we find, that would be more expensive as well as we go. But assuming that we are, we're okay and we don't, in the next week or so, we, the project should be complete, we would know what the number is at that end, end result, and then we, I think we can strategize on going, going to the Board of Finance to do that. Yep.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
I don't think there's any reason to wait, certainly beyond that being complete.
Makes sense. Okay, any questions about that, any concerns?
I have a motion.
Thank you. Allison made a motion, is there a second? Sheri, thank you. All those in favor? Everyone that's here? Looking down at the announcements in future meetings, Dr. Lutze, would you like to describe any part of this?
Sure. Next time we meet, school will have been in session for about two weeks, week and a half at that point, hard to believe. Gary mentioned briefly the new teacher orientation, which begins tomorrow. To first compliment him and his team for putting all of that together, again, you know, for these 34 new teachers, it's their introduction to the New Canaan Public Schools, and Gary's team really does a wonderful job. They'll be here at 6:00, 6:30 tomorrow morning, setting up, getting all the, all the things ready in the room for, so that everyone, when they walk through the door, they have the right first impression. It's very well done. At our next meeting, we'll have our opening of school reports from our principals, which we've traditionally done, to share with us their impression of the start of the school year and how things are going. As we mentioned, Bob will be here to share with us his, his reporting on the facilities and all of the many projects, big and small, that have gone on over the summer, and what our plans are, you know, going forward with the, the capital money that we have in this year. I should report, we have purchased the new vans for our transportation, for our special education vans through Roy's department, so those are ready to go as well. And we'll also, I think, have the financial reports to share.
If anyone has any other questions right now, or if they have suggestions after we finish the meeting for other topics to discuss for putting up the agenda, please just give me a call or send me an email. Any questions about that? Okay. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Allison, motion to adjourn, second. Is there anyone else? Sheri? Yeah, thank you, Scott, thank you, second. All those in favor of adjourned, and everyone's agreed.